If anything needs to be changed, maybe even programming the traffic light, we can have that incorporated into Phase Two. Very rarely do you get an opportunity to test drive your stadium and the activities Echo One. So they will be monitoring the activity of all the games that are going to be the four additional games. And if there's any issues that need to be dealt with, we'll be asked to deal with them as part of Phase Two.
Now, we also have a number of other teams who play on Hellman Field. How disruptive is this construction process going to be to their seasons? Some of them are now, obviously, in summer and the fall.
We will be working outboard of the fence that surrounds the track. Public attendance in what was the bleacher or is the bleacher area now is going to be what's affected. We won't have room during the full one construction for spectators during those, you know, over the summer and fall to get these in. So we will not have any impact on the actual activity itself, but spectators could be restricted to, I don't know, we can pick areas on the track, just put down some protective sheeting so that they can still attend, but for the most part, we're outboard of the activities, the sports fields themselves.
And that will impact the fall, but not the spring presumably, or both?
Fall only.
Okay. Other questions, your board members? If not, public comment on this issue. Same rules as before, Mrs. Haron.
As a parent, I'm sorry, do I need to announce?
Well, I know you well, but I think the problem with the question is yes.
Diane Haron, Hilltown Township. Having attended many, many home football games at Poppi Yoder, I heard some very disconserving items tonight. And for those of you who don't regularly attend, it deeply troubles me that we are building a stadium, whether temporal or permanent, that we cannot put an ambulance up there on. That is beyond my comprehension that we would even discuss doing this and playing a sport of any kind without having the ability to get a student or an injured adult down off the field with proper medical care. I understand Phase Two, but to have not planned this into Phase One is nothing but short-sighted. It is neglect on those kids. To not have thought of the fact that we have no ability to have bathrooms, I am still trying to figure out, since no one has made these plans public, how exactly you're going to get someone in a wheelchair from the top of those stands down to this building or to the building next door, should they need an ADA compliant bathroom. And I'm sorry, but an ADA compliant porta potty, if you've ever seen it, it is completely impractical for anyone who needs assistance. There is absolutely no room for a second person to help someone in a wheelchair. I have not heard anything related to, other than how we're going to test a sound system. No one has stated where we're getting the sound system from. Because there isn't one up there now, and if you strip it out of Poppi Yoder and then you plan on playing at Poppi Yoder, you don't have one there then. No one has accounted for the worst revenue to the class of 2016, who doesn't get to run the concession stand and loses thousands of dollars for their prom. No one has mentioned that. No one has mentioned during the game, during halftime, where the teams are expected to go. Because the only locker rooms are all the way down there in the dark, and there is no walkway. So without a team room up there, I'd like to know what the practical logistical plan is for that. Because that's injury written all over it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Clara Steinberg, East Rockville Township. I have three questions. You said you're going to have a walkway to the seating, but not to the concession stand or the bathrooms?
Mr. Spatafor, can you respond to that?
You said you're going to do a walkway in Phase One from the existing sidewalk up to the seating area. So how is somebody in a wheelchair going to get from the seating to the bathroom without walkway?
Dr. Yarnell, I mean, last time we did this, Dr. Radigan compiled all the questions and then we answered them at the end of the public comment. Are we going to do the same thing now?
We could. Yes. So, yes, if you would give us the other questions, and we will try to answer them.
Okay. Why separate press box and a video stand? Wouldn't it be cheaper to put the video stand on top of the press box like all the other high schools? And if you remove the bleachers, are you secure to have the bleachers up there for football games? What about all the, so all the other sports that play up there, if the spectators are going to have no place to stand or not allowed to go?
I think Mr. Spatafor already answered that question, basically saying that there would be no impact this spring, so they would have the same facilities that they currently have for all the other stadiums.
I'm talking about the fall.
In the fall. Well, the bleachers are, in theory, going to be installed by September 26th, so there would be a short period presumably in September when there would not be bleachers and they leave. What I heard was that we would accommodate spectators on the track with coverage to prevent damage to the track. If I understood his comments correctly.
And the sidewalk going from the existing sidewalk to the bleachers, where is that going? Is it going on the outside of the fence all the way around to the right or to the laughter?
Let us answer all those questions. More?
No, I say?
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Lindner?
Robert Lindner, West Rockville Township. I have a comment. It would have been appropriate to the public if it had been given an overview of what the bid included and how it compared with Dr. Radigan's proposal. So I listened to some of the questions you asked, and it's like you didn't understand what was in the bid either. So it just come up and say 1.47 million, and the public has no idea of what that means, what that includes, what it doesn't include. And I think it would have been appropriate for you to do that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Not, all right, let's go back to this issue. Mr. Kasper, do you want to state once again or redefine the motion as you wish to place it on the table?
He was already seconded.
Well, he can.
No.
No, it was not seconded. That's why I'm asking whether he wants to amend it or if he wants it as original stated.
Well, I'm not the solicitor, but the
The solicitor's here.
The change that I thought might be, we're accepting the base bid, and that
I was of the opinion that the bid, the motion's reference to the dollar amount was sufficient to identify what you're voting on.
Okay.
That was my opinion.
Say your thing.
Mrs. Cron said it was seconded. It was not seconded.
Mr. Reddell?
Oh, that's right.
So the motion is standing?
The motion is standing, right? It's okay?
And the motion was fine, in my opinion.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Demming? Any other comments from board members?
Can we go, if any of it possible, to answer some of the questions that were asked?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafor can answer some of those.
Could you join us at the podium and answer as many of those questions as you can? Of course.
Do you mind asking one more question?
The sidewalk, if I may, the sidewalk, I think that people are talking and are thinking is there's a side, you know, the sidewalk is going to be along the track to the bleachers. Is that right? That's what I'm thinking.
Sidewalks?
No new sidewalks going up to the field, and there's no new ADA ramp going up there because we already have them.
We have the existing sidewalk and ramp that go from the parking lot up to the sports facility. The new walkways will be in front of the new bleachers. It will run parallel with the track, the straightaways on the track. When you get to the top of the side, the existing sidewalk, you will have ADA accessibility, meaning you can roll a chair or if you're crutches or whatever impairment may be, you have a hard surface, whether it's the track or the pavement, to get from the sidewalk to your ADA seat. There is accessibility. The ADA temporary toilets will be immediately adjacent to the sidewalks to make them as accommodating as possible, as opposed to none that are there now. In response to the ambulance, the ambulance will absolutely be up at Sports Side. It will be used in the rear lot on the other side of the tennis court. It's not that we haven't made the permanent place for where the ambulance would be in Phase Two, but we do have a place to put the ambulance to accommodate it for these four games. I mean, I'm sure they do that. They must have ambulance there now. Whatever they're
For our parent sports.
Right, whatever they're doing now, we will continue to do until the permanent complex is done.
It won't happen. They don't have.
So how, I don't understand how we're making it. Anyway, you're, to answer your press box?
Yeah.
What's your question, please, Mrs. Haron?
No, I'm just absorbing, because if you're not familiar with what goes on now, and you put the proposal together for what we're doing in the future, and you're banking on what we're doing now, and you don't even know what we do now, that's frightening. It's just frightening.
Can we continue with the meeting? Mr. Spatafor, would you please respond to the questions that were asked?
The press box, we do have a platform on top of the press box on the home side. There's also a camera platform that's going to be on the other side for the visiting team to be able to video their game.
They can't use the top of ours?
Typically, no.
Why?
It's there for their use. I mean, we, facilities for press boxes, I'm sure they could, but they're given the opportunity to have the ring set up on their side. Even for us, we can also set up and use on their side.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, I'm a band parent, so when I go, I always use the other field's video area because the bands face the home side, not the visitor's side. So if a visitor's going to video, say, the band, they're only going to get the backside. So, I mean, I don't know, everybody wants to video the rear.
No, I'm sure that they, either school can use either platform, depending on what the situation or
I'm just wondering why the extra expense if they can
It's not an extra expense for the platform. It's either you have seating, you either have seating there or you have the platform. It's the same planking, one is lower than the other one. It's not an extra with the platform. It's the same height as the seats. It's not another box, press box. It's just a platform.
I don't know, I'm trying to tell without seeing.
Other questions that you can respond to?
I don't, whatever questions.
I think that was it.
Okay. Dr. Radigan, I believe you've got an answer to at least one of the questions. Thank you.
Right, one of the concerns raised was the concession stands and the class of 2016. Just to let you know, myself, Mrs. Johnson, Dr. Creedon, Mrs. Jarentana, anybody else in that meeting, Mrs. Johnson, we met on this very issue because we realized that's important to them to raise money for their proms, et cetera. So we have intended to plan a place where we will actually be using the high school lobby as a place of selling the concession items, and also we're going to have students go out to the stands, just like you would at a Phillies game, where maybe they're going to wear, you know, the packs on top and carry the drinks. So those who don't want to come in, we can accommodate them out there. So we have thought about that because we know that's an important issue for the students.
Mr. Demming, you have any questions?
I'd like, I'd like your opinion on how the ADA temporary first aid up here compared to what exists now at Poppi Yoder. I have an impression that there is no comparison. Is that right?
That's correct.
I think you ought to state that. I mean, you were very, very, your organization said that Poppi Yoder does not comply with ADA requirements, not only in terms of ramp space and access up into the stands, I'm assuming also in terms of restroom facilities. Is that true?
That's correct.
So making the comparison, you're trying to compare apples and oranges, is that fair? Okay.
I would point out that no matter what choice is made tonight or has been made in the past, that there is going to be dislocation for this fall's football season. I think that's a given, and it will require, I believe, a certain degree of accommodation on the part of the administration and on the part of our fans and students and coaches in order to make this a success. So, and I think that's true no matter where we play or where we would have played. It's just, once you start down this road, it's going to be disruptive, just like this high school project was disruptive when we were building it. And I think if you ask Mr. Creedon or any of the people who lived through that experience, they wouldn't be terribly positive about it, but the outcome was a good one, even though it took longer than we had all hoped. So, at this point, I'd like to call the question and take a vote on this. So, all those in favor of, let's restate the motion. The motion is to approve the base bid of 1.475 million dollars. This will include purchase of bleachers, footers, walkways around the stadium, some electrical work, relocation of a water line, some site work to create erosion control and stormwater pumping, a press box and a tower on the opposite side. Have I missed anything, Mr. Spatafor? Thank you. So that's, that's what's included in the bid that we are accepting. There were four bids. This is the lowest bid as we are required, the lowest acceptable bidder. And I'd like to add that presumably this is obviously contingent upon the approval of the solicitor as to the criteria, as we always do with bids. They, they need to be, need to determine that these individuals have the bond issues, whatever's required to fulfill the requirements of the bid. So at this point, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries eight to.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes, Mrs. Cron, could you approve that, that motion as Peter read it in a minute? Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Mrs. Sarnes?
I just wanted to make a comment. I, I, I am in favor of 5,000 seats, but I feel like I needed to see, you know, a comparison, as Mrs. Miller said, with Dr. Radigan's original proposal. And I made some fun thoughts today, and, you know, I just, I feel like we didn't get all, you know, I didn't have enough information to vote in favor. So while I am in favor of building bleachers at the, at Hellman Field, and I'm in favor of 5,000 seats, I feel like in order to vote tonight, I needed more information.
Okay, thank you. The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for May 7th here at the district's office. Thank you.
You're welcome. Finance Committee, Mr. Sarnes?
Thank you, Dr. Haron. Now, the Finance Committee meeting was also held on April 8th as part of that joint meeting. So I have, that was our normal business meeting, so I have several motions to approve. The first is a motion to authorize nutritional services to apply for grants as presented on April 8, 2014, which are the Team Nutrition Mini Grants and USDA Farm Discharge Grant.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnes and seconded by Mr. Regoma, sorry, to approve this or authorize the nutritional services to apply for grants. Comments or questions for board members? Hearing seen none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Next, Mr. Sarnes?
The next is a motion to approve the contracts as listed below, numbers A through M.
Do I have a second to the motion to approve contracts?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnes, seconded by Mrs. Miller to approve the contracts. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Sarnes?
The next is a motion to approve repository sale number 15032-19 for $500.
Do I have a second to that? Moved by Mr. Sarnes and seconded by Mr. Demming to approve the repository sale.
Okay.
Mrs. Johnson or Mr. Sarnes?
Now
I hear comments, so I presume we are having second thoughts or changed our minds?
Well, I think we, we talked about this in the, oh, this is a different one. Oh, okay, okay.
So if there's a motion as second on the floor, can you explain for board members so that there is no confusion what you're asking for?
All right, I'll let Mrs. Johnson explain it. Do you have?
Yes. In your board packet, you did receive a copy of the letter from the County of Bucks explaining the repository sale. This particular property has a assessed value of $10,000. It does have a present sale value of around $90,000, and this individual has placed a bid of $500 for this. So the bid is less than the taxes that would be collected on this property. You did have one of these before, and you did not approve the sale, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case you didn't read the memo in full.
So the administration's recommendation is to, to vote no on the motion as it's made? Any other comments or questions for board members? Thank you for reminding me. I voted wrong the last time. Actually, not to do over two. If not, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. Zero to eight. Mr. Sarnes?
The next is a motion to approve IDA Section 619 Use of Funds Agreement for 2013-14 Funds of $2,667.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnes and seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the IDA funds, fund agreement. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Sarnes?
Next is a motion to authorize the administration to complete payment in lieu of tax, application for payment.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Everybody's afraid now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kasper. Moved by Mr. Sarnes and seconded by Mr. Kasper to approve the motion. I hate to even try to read this, this is, this sounds very, it sounds like educational gobbledygook to me, but, Mrs. Johnson, can you give us a very, I apologize, I was not there for the meeting when this was discussed, I would like to have a brief overview.
Yes, this is the annual payment in lieu of taxes that we do receive from the state for the state game lands that are in the district. We do have to apply for those annually, and this is the time of year.
Any other comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Sarnes?
And the final motion is to accept the proposal for Malle LLP to service independent accountants for the years ending June 30th, 2014, 2015, and 2016 at a cost of $20,000 annually.
We have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnes, seconded by Mr. Regoma? Thank you. To approve the services of Malle LLP as independent accountants. Comments or questions for board members? If not, I should, I would like to note that this is actually a reduction in cost from our current cost. This was put out as a RFP, and this particular group came in significantly lower than other people on that list. So, any other comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Sarnes?
We have two Finance Committee meetings scheduled, April 30th, and that will be a budget meeting only. Just to remind, what we're going to attempt to do with that meeting is try to bring everything together, answer questions, there'll be no presentation, so it's really an open discussion for board members. We're going to try to get, we will have more detail that some of the board members requested to go over comparisons to prior years and to prior year's budgets. So that's what that meeting will be, on May 7th. It'll be our regular business type meeting, plus hopefully we will vote as, we will have another budget discussion and then go to a special board meeting as Dr. Haron is set to vote on a proposed final budget.
Thank you. The interview here, Mrs. Miller?
Thank you. The IU met on April 15 at the IU, various contracts, agreements, payments, purchases, as well as personnel items were discussed and voted on. April is Autism Awareness Month, and a presentation, short video, and handout were provided to the board. One of the methodologies used in the classrooms is the competent learner model, which is designed to develop skills and encourage independence in the school, home, and community settings. Bridge's Virtual, the IU's online learning program, runs an innovative summer program that provides online course opportunities for middle and high school students. The course catalog of core and elective courses meets the needs of students who require credit toward graduation and students looking to accelerate their learning through enrichment and initial credit offerings. The summer program was meant to help districts deliver high-quality learning opportunities in lieu of a traditional face-to-face program or in support of traditional summer programs. It may also be helpful in providing keystone remedial and preparation opportunities. The Reading Olympics was held in Abel, which is designed to encourage students to read more books, read a greater variety of books, and share what they have read. This year, 372 teams with approximately 5,200 students are expected to earn $55,000, quite a generous accomplishment. A resolution was developed and approved for submission to Harrisburg, urging them to lift the restrictions and allow the medical assistance funding to Florida school districts and IU's to support the services to students with disabilities. If you recall, Dr. Phillips discussed this dramatic loss of funds to Penridge. If I look over, it was almost $800,000 loss over the last two years. So if you would like a copy of the resolution to submit from Penridge, I would like to get your copy. A reminder, the May 10 Run, Walk, and Roll Together for Kids fundraisers, which includes one mile and 5K events, sponsorship opportunities are available. Please see me for details if you are interested. Thank you, Doc. The next meeting probably on the schedule here is May 20, 2014. Thank you.
Thank you. The next issue is Personnel Committee, and that's Mr. Demming.
I find it interesting, by the way, before we get into this, that you have to vote on the motion even if you want to kill it. That's why, that's why I seconded it. We had a Personnel Executive meeting on April 7th. We discussed a number of things, but tonight we've got two motions. Motion one is to approve a Secretary Student Accounting Job Description, and we have this, I won't go through that. So I'm going to include that along with the motion to approve the Secretary Job Description, the second one, and so I'd like a second on those two motions, one and two.
We have a second to the motions.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Yardley to approve the job descriptions, one for the Secretary Student Accounting Job and the other for the Secretary Student Registration Job. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero.
And our next Personnel meeting is going to be scheduled for June 12th.
Wait, you had one more?
There is a third motion floating around somewhere.
This is the, yes, I'm sorry, I don't have that.
It's on the Facilities one.
Did you get your second?
It was added.
This, the new business one?
No, not the new business one.
There's a third one, which is a motion to approve the compensation for the sound and lighting systems operation, as discussed at this executive session, and alluded to here by two of the students this time. I'd like a second to that motion.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Demming, seconded by Mrs. Miller to approve the revised compensation for student lighting and sound individuals. We have comments or questions for board members? We have comments or questions for board members, Mrs. Yardley?
Yeah, I have a question. This is to be going forward, is that correct? It's not to, it's not, is it changing the current pay, or is it just moving forward with new hires?
Going forward from tonight.
From with new hires, so if people already had their pay approved, that's not changing? Right. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the two students that are here today?
It wouldn't affect anything at the last meeting because you voted to approve the pay at the last meeting. This is going forward if you approve this time.
So, wait, now I'm confused. Any student who performed this function beyond tonight, even those who are already employed, have already been employed, or only students who are new to the job and have never been employed?
This is for, moving forward, if a student has had 50-plus hours, which I think both these gentlemen here were supposed to, as you were saying tonight, they would make the $23 an hour. So then, once they earn their hours, they keep their hours. So it's not even a grandfather. It's just they, they've earned, if they've been trained with 50, they get 23. If they have 20-plus, they get 19, and if they are brand-new, then they get 15. But we do not have, we did not have a pay scale to pay them. Now we have a scale.
Is that understood? Do we have other questions or comments for board members? Mr. Agoma, you look almost slightly puzzled.
Well, and just once, it's not, it's not going to regress back to zero?
No, because you already approved the payment for the last time for those people.
Okay, so it's not starting over year, next year?
No, nor is it, you know, subject to the rule when the board comes up what you're going to pay them. This is what you're going to pay students unless you change the scale.
I just understood.
Thank you.
Mrs. Yardley?
Because we never had a scale, we never had a schedule at all, and any schedule.
No, you did not. A number was given to, a number was given to the board, and you either approved it or not, but now you have something that the high school representatives can say, you can do this. This is the opportunity for you to get paid at a higher level by volunteer.
And again, I would like to remember, we posted on the website, so parents and students have access.
If you posted it on the high school website, the high schools will be responsible for keeping track of that, or simply turn it over to them.
My understanding is these monies come from people, not, from people who rent the electoral, pay these students' earnings.
That's my understanding too.
Except for the board.
Except for the board.
Utilize that certain hours, Mr. Talison.
I'll have to talk to Dr. Creed about that, and sometimes that gets rolled in as volunteer service, so we'll get that clarified.
All right, are we ready to vote on this motion? All those in favor, aye, opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Deming?
Okay, policy review. I have one motion, which is to recommend the second reason and approval of Policy Number 903, which is posted on our website, which had to do with public participation in board meetings.
Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Deming and seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the policy nine, or review, revise Policy 903, Public Participation in Board Meetings. Comments or questions for board members? Mrs. Yardley?
So this is the final approval, correct?
Well, like all things, this is the final approval until we make another change, right?
Yes, any student to work on. This is the final one, if you make another change to this policy.
This has been one of our well-tilled fields in the policy book concerning the items that come up in public participation. So any other comments or questions on this motion? If not, all those in favor, aye, opposed, motion carries eight-zero.
Mr. Deming, we have to make note that there's going to be another policy meeting scheduled, but what's in today's meeting is not paper, not that?
It is first, it is correct. It is correct on yours. I don't know why others are correct or incorrect. It is the 14th, and policy is first.
You okay with that?
I don't think I have a choice.
No, for yours, yours is fine, right?
I didn't have a choice.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Moving on to the Upper Bucks County Technical School Committee. Normally, I ask Mrs. Schmidt, but she was unable to attend the meeting, so I'm going to attempt to summarize what happened at the April 17th Joint Operating Committee Meeting. First of all, we did honor a student of the month. That happened to be Scott Laird. He's a Diesel Equipment Technology Program student from the Palisades School District. Even more, and maybe I should not say that, but I do think that this is an even greater honor for our students, we talked about, first of all, 15 competitors from Upper Bucks County Technical School were qualified to go to the State Skill USA Competition. And of those 15, 10 won medals, which I think is a fairly impressive number. Of the 10, as mentioned by Dr. Radigan, one of our students, and a total of four students, won the competition in Pennsylvania, and therefore qualified to go to the national competition in Kansas City, Missouri. And those students competed either in the Automated Manufacturing Technology Team, of which the Penridge student worked with two Quakertown students to achieve that honor, and the other student, also from Quakertown, will compete in the employment application process. So this is taking a bit of a chump of change out of the VOTEC's budget. Fortunately, there is enough in that particular category because the number of students who have qualified has continued to increase over the years, which I think is definitely a credit, again, to those who are, to the students who attend the vocational technical school and to the faculty and administration there. We also talked about the Chapter 339 review, which has to do with technical education. Fortunately, that team found no items that needed corrective action. That's always good news. There also was, during that visit, a surprise PDE audit on the Technology Program, which also was passed without any findings or corrective actions. We are now up to Plan Con Part D on the project that Mrs. Miller alluded to, the renovations at the VOTEC, having been approved by the board, and discussions on Plan Con Part F. Of course, the real nitty-gritty comes when the state decides or decides not to reimburse the vocational school for the cost of these money. Currently, there's a moratorium on that, and it's much more crucial there even than here because the number is much larger in terms of the percentage that the districts stand to regain when, or hopefully when the state reimburses, as they are semi-obligated to do. We also talked about the fact that on April 30th this week, there will be 100 business and industry representatives at the VOTEC doing NOTD performance testing of our students. Last year, I believe, the number that passed the NOTD test was in the high 80s. Obviously, we'd like to see that go even higher. It becomes more and more of a challenge, much like no child left behind as you approach the full competency. There also will be, in case anyone wants to call in, there will be a radio show hosted from the Law Enforcement Lab on May 4th, that's Sunday, from 11:00 to 1:00. And this will, among other things, be used to promote the 50th anniversary celebration, which will officially occur on May 15th at the Vocational Technical School. So now knowing that it's 50 years old, that I think it's even more impetus as to why it needs serious renovation. At that May 15th night or day, there will be a JOC meeting, but there will also be a formal groundbreaking ceremony. So we'll see if any of the board members, Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Miller, I could break a shovel or something else to, you know, break a foot, who knows?
I could jump on that shovel.
Yes. So that's planned for the 15th of May. The May 6th is when the renovation project bids are due. Hopefully, Dilly and the bidders will have good news for us. Obviously, that's something we will wait and see. We are also commencing work with a National Technical Honor Society at the VOTEC. There are 52 students who potentially qualify for this, and we are aided in that by Mr. Paul Lorenz, who is a graduate of the UBCTS and also a resident of Purposy, a member of the Purposy Rotary Club, and they will be assisting in that project. The project at the VOTEC was discussed at length. It is scheduled for completion by December 2015, and if not completed by then, there are damage charges, overages beyond that point. There was an agreement reached with the association in terms of the days at the end of the year. In theory, the vocational technical school teachers will be in session until July 3rd. Obviously, that's not a very popular choice, probably even less popular than it would be with the students. But in any case, there has been an agreement on how to use the time that is required by the contract in terms of that issue. There also was issued a guidance plan by, spearheaded really by Tracy Hill, who some of you know. She is a guidance counselor. Was a guidance counselor here at the high school now, is in charge of the guidance area at VOTEC. Also, there is a comprehensive planning committee at the Vocational Technical School. Like here, they're the same phase school, and we have approved the appointment of six teacher representatives, two parent representatives, two business representatives, four community representatives, two specialist representatives, and eight administrative representatives, and they include Mr. Dwight Anderson, the current JOC chairperson, he's from Quakertown, and Mrs. Cindy McCurdy, who is a former JOC member from Palisades. And other than that, it was a fairly quiet evening, and that's the extent of the Vocational Technical School. Other than, I will say, I am still hoping that we will have a contract before the end of the year with our negotiating staff. I say this sometimes more optimistically, sometimes less so, but we are really down, I believe, to one item, and we will be meeting on Friday again in the hopes of getting that put in place. At this point, the next item is the Technology Committee. Mr. Thompson is not here. That committee will, did meet on the 7th. I don't know if anyone has any comments that need to be made relative to the meeting. We don't have the motions. If not, the next committee meeting for that particular committee has not been scheduled, but will be scheduled as needed, and we will move to Act 48. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. Act 48 did not meet during the month of April. They are scheduled for their next meeting on May 15th at 4:00 p.m. right here in the district admin office.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Board members have any unfinished business? Mr. Sarnese?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have one item that actually was discussed also at the Facilities Finance Meeting, and it's with regard to a maintenance vehicle, Barry, if you remember, that Mr. Loughler purchased, we approved back in February. However, due to problems with the dealer, they, there were problems with the paint or something.
Delivery was a problem for a few weeks, turned into painting problem, turned into the drying booth number abruptly. They told us we should have the demo.
Right, so what, what I would like is the board just to approve, they are giving us, in its place, for a little cheaper price, I believe, a...
It was a 2013 3,500 versus a 2014 2,500, and that's tonnage. The demo had 1,000 miles on it and had a few more bells and whistles. So Kelly Blue Book actually had that vehicle worth more than the one we purchased. They're giving it to us CoStar pricing for, I believe, $72 cheaper than $77.
Right, it's, we approved the price of $38,772.65. They're giving it to us for $38,700. So we'd just like to get the board approval for that.
So you're making a motion to that effect?
Yes, the motion would be to authorize, to accept the 2013 3,500 GMC Sierra truck as a replacement for the previously approved CoStar's purchase of the 2014 Sierra 2,500.
We have a second for that.
A second, Mr. Anderson, for your review?
Moved by Mr. Sarnese and seconded by Mr. Deming to exchange trucks for a slightly older, but more valuable perhaps, vehicle. Comments or questions for board members? Mr. Casper?
Yeah, I'm not completely sure, but I thought when we ran this by John, our former solicitor, that we did not have to vote again, but maybe we did.
No, we actually, that's why we brought it out. I'm reading his letter, yes, he wants a motion for us to accept.
Because I saw it on there too, and I didn't see any action, so, okay, that's good, pick up that. How's that right to you, are you, is there a solicitor?
No punditizing, right? No punditizing.
I think the board should, should vote on it. My question is how this new vehicle was priced? Okay, so...
It was CoStar, yes.
All right, fair enough.
And we approved that one.
And the original, the vehicle that you, that you're not getting was also priced through CoStars?
Yes.
Okay, fair, that's fine, thank you.
And for anyone who doesn't know what CoStars is, it's the state bidding process. Any other comments or questions on the motion? If not, all those in favor, aye, opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Any other unfinished business? Okay, new business. The first new business is a motion to approve the Penridge School District Special Education Plan. This will run from July 1, 2014, through June 30th, 2017. So I will make that a motion, but we have a second. Silence. Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Moved by Dr. Yarne, now seconded by Mrs. Miller. Dr. Radigan, can you give us kind of a brief update on this subject, since it has not appeared before? I don't, I don't think it's appeared before on the agenda.
Okay, this is part of the comprehensive planning process which we're in right now. If you, you call, we're a Phase 3 district, and Penridge has to have their full plan completed by November 30th. That being said, there are two pieces of it, professional development piece and a special ed piece that are subsets of it, and a special ed piece had to be approved in advance. Dr. Phillips had given a presentation on this. He had committee input, and it was approved by Dr. Yarne, myself, and it was on the website for 30 days for the community to review, and we're ready to vote on it.
Did we get any response from the community that we know?
The last I heard from Dr. Phillips, he did not. That was about a week ago.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor, aye, opposed, motion carries eight-zero. Also on your new business, and this was a motion moved out this afternoon, and I apologize for the late breaking news of the speak. I have been out of town since Tuesday, so I did not get to this item. We did have, and I want to thank all those who applied, we had, I believe, 58 total members of the community who applied to be part of the district's Comprehensive Planning Steering Committee. We included, you know, the question of what part they would like to represent, either a business, community, or parents. Some of the folks on this, as I mentioned with the VOTEC, are dictated in terms of the groups themselves. For instance, the teachers get to appoint people to participate in this, so the state has rules. The board needs to approve members, and I asked board members for comments. I appreciate the five board members who got back to me with responses on potential appointees to this. So I'm making the motion that we approve the following people for the Comprehensive Planning Steering Committee, and one important criteria is, the first meeting is May 8th, and these people, I believe, I don't know whether Anita has, all six people have agreed to that. So the people that I'm recommending are for, from the business community, Catherine Hope, I hope I pronounced that correctly. I apologize if I have not, and Mark Horn from the community, Amy Body, and Lisa Rogers, and parents, Joan Cullen and Jackie Farudin. I also have asked, and since he's not here tonight to defend himself, but has agreed to do that, I've asked Mr. Thompson, who has been a major advocate of comprehensive future planning, to participate in this committee as well. Although Dr. Radigan tells me that the board does not have a formal place in the sense that the state doesn't require that we participate at all, I also plan to attend that march. sorry, May eighth meeting. So I would ask that we approve these six names and Mr. Thompson to participate in this committee. Do I have a second? Moved by Dr. Yornell, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve members for the comprehensive planning committee. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I would also say to Mrs. Herring that I do not know the answer to your question. I do know that the, from a special needs point of view, that we have the special needs or special education plan, and from the vocational side, we have the vocational side, including parents there as well. So I hope that we have covered all of those. Are they all coordinated? There are cross-participants, I believe, but I don't believe, other than that, they're coordinated. Beyond that, are there, is there any other new business the board members wants to have this done? Okay, if not, I will move to the announcements. There will be a special school board meeting, and it's scheduled for May seventh, two thousand fourteen, for the purpose of approving the final budget and any other general business that may come up before that time. It will be here, as far as I know, at seven thirty, unless the notice goes out to change it, but the plan is to have it here. The next regular school board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, and note that that's a Wednesday, not a, not a Monday as we usually have. That has to do with the, how, where the Memorial Day holiday falls. And it will also be at seven thirty here in the district administration office. There were executive sessions held on both April seventh and April the twenty-third, and they were for the purpose of personnel issues. At this point, comments or questions from guests? Same issue?
I have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you would just a moment.
That's the proposed final budget, right?
Proposed final budget. So it will be open, as I mentioned, open for public inspection for thirty days, or more, but at least thirty days after the board presumably passes it, whenever we pass it, but the presumption is to pass it on this date, May seventh. Yes?
Jake Hamfret, South Town Township. With respect to the, might have, times have changed. Thirty years ago, when I graduated high school, after serving four years on a lighting crew, never mind all of the dreams, I think I would be a A position in high school. But be that as it may, is it going to be a W-two part-time employee or a ten ninety-nine contractor?
Can I answer that question? I'm sorry?
It would be a W-two.
Okay. Mrs. Johnson, who approves the money, says a W-two.
I just hope that whatever amount that we bill to rip these employees out, that we recover their payroll taxes as well. It's not an expense to the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you for, I don't, is that the way we do it currently? Mrs. Johnson is saying yes, I believe, so hopefully that will continue.
And the other point that I wanted to bring up about the bleacher bid, one point four seven five million, is that inclusive of engineering fees for the hearing?
Mr. Stadhor, can you answer that question? I honestly would say no, but no, we did not.
Okay, so is there a set percentage on that dollar amount, or is there a cut fee? How does that work?
Standard summer project fee.
What is that?
Six percent. Six percent. Okay, so we really did approve one point four seven five, we actually approved it at one point five five, which includes a hundred, six percent fee.
Is Dewey's contract approved previously?
Yes.
Oh, it was already approved, right?
It's on cost.
Right, but it's, but if it's based on the total cost of the project, that factors into what the fee would be.
Tonight, all the district is doing is accepting the lowest responsible bidder that needs specs, right? The bleacher project. So it's perfectly within its power to do that. Whether or not a particular person thinks that's good policy, that's a different question. I think, hold on, let me finish it, please. I think reasonable board members maybe can disagree about whether that's good policy. But whether the process is lawful and whether the district as a body has the authority to do this, it seems to me that it does. So I've tried to keep quiet up here and, you know, be somewhat deferential my first night here, but it seems to me that the public and the board can have a robust debate about whether moving forward with the bleachers is good policy. It also seems to me quite apparent that the process and the district's acceptance of what it believes to be the lowest responsible bid that needs specs is perfectly lawful. So I wanted to interject that.
Okay, well, that's not what I was, I was looking at just transparency on the total cost.
And I appreciate that, and I'm looking at a different aspect.
Well, you're looking at the legal aspect.
Of the process.
And as a taxpayer, I'm looking at the financial.
There are also promises made.
Anyone else? Mr. Rush?
Good evening, Lee Rush from Purpacy. I had occasion after the last board meeting to meet one of the board members and ask that member if they recalled what I said at the end of the meeting. It was late, people get tired at the end of the night, so the board member truthfully said, you know, you don't remember, I'm kind of tired. And, you know, this happens a lot. I'm not going to call you all over.
Oh, well.
I do, I really appreciated that honesty, because I don't think it's the first time I've ever said anything that's not remembered. Happens a lot. So I came up tonight to speak again to my point. In the minutes, it says, Mr. Rush urged all to be mindful of the decisions that need to be made for the school district. So I get the need for brevity in synthesizing one's comments in minutes, but I really want to make it clear that my concern, as a professional preventionist in drug prevention and counseling previously, many years with kids who ended up in some trouble early on, is that the grades from six through eight, the middle school grades, are some of the most critical in one's life. And my comment that night had to do with our counseling staff, and I think it's one of the most professional and commendable groups of people I've ever met in my career. And that said, they work hard, and I think that years ago, interestingly enough, the same year that we built this turf field in two thousand eight, and I'm pretty sure I have my facts straight, because I usually do my homework, but I think that was the year that we reduced the number of counselors from two in each middle school to one. And part of the reason was to make the FTE that was reduced into an instructional support person, which was helpful, because that was an academic support that I think we need. So I'm here tonight just to restate that my hope is that in the future, and probably the out year would be fifteen, sixteen, not next school year, to really have the same kind of discernment and discussion and priority around social, emotional health of middle schoolers as we do for so many other important projects. And finally, I did send a letter to all the board members to invite you all, and the public is also...